All right, we're going to go ahead and call this special meeting of the Camarillo City Council for Wednesday, October 21, 2020 to order. Mrs. Craven?
I will call the Camarillo Sanitary District Board of Directors meeting to order.
All right, Madam Clerk, may we please have roll for both the council and the sanitary district?
Councilmember Craven?
Here.
Councilmember Kildie?
Here.
Councilmember Mulchey?
Present.
Vice Mayor Santangelo?
Here.
Mayor Tremblay?
Here. Would you please all join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We have one item tonight, and it is our first quarterly update for budget. I know we are also competing with game two of the World Series, but I think we are, we are, we're going to do very well tonight. And Mr. Uribe, I believe you are joining us to provide us with that first quarterly update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Camarillo City Council and sanitary board. I will get this video going. Okay, is that working for everyone?
I have not seen it yet, Mr. Uribe. The camera's still on you, so I haven't seen anything streaming yet.
One second. Here we go. Better?
Yes, we can see it now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So if you recall that once COVID-19 pandemic hit, every city probably in the country was faced with the challenge of dealing with significant revenue losses as a result of the pandemic-driven recession. So we budgeted accordingly, we came up with some assumptions that were, a lot of this was anybody's guess at the time of building a budget during the months of March, April, May of last, of this last fiscal year. And so what we're doing now is a first quarter update, three months through the fiscal year through September 30th. And we'll walk you through that. So first off, no recommended adjustments to the budget at this time. We will come back in January for mid-year budget review, and that's the time we typically do any adjustments to the budget based on information. At that point, we will have had three more months of information. Right now, in the first quarter, as you'll see as we go through some of the slides, not a ton of information that comes in the first part of the year, but we will go through that, and we have different ways of measuring that that we'll walk through. We'll talk about budgeting and pandemic, and then we'll get through the actual revenue and expenditure first quarter trends, and then we'll have an update on capital improvement projects, CIP. So in budgeting and pandemic, we are still in a period of unprecedented uncertainty. During the period of March through April, it was a complete economic shutdown. In May and June, there was some limited reopening, and those were the periods of we were putting together our budget for this current fiscal year. So now, through the end of the first quarter, July through September, what we're seeing out there is some more phased reopenings, and actually a steep recovery. And then moving forward into the next quarter, October through December, we seem to be trending favorably. Currently, the county is in the red tier, which means 25% inside dining is allowed, and 50% of retail is allowed to be open. And we're hoping to get some better news next week, that we may move to the next tier. So touching a little bit on some of the key impacts that the pandemic had on our assumptions. The two main revenues were the sales tax and the transient occupancy tax. So when we were developing the budget, we looked at the previous fiscal year, and in fiscal year 1920, we saw some store closures through the, through May with the phased reopening, and we assumed a 12.5% decrease from the previous fiscal year 1819 or pre-pandemic levels. Then for this current fiscal year, we did an additional 2% decrease from fiscal year 1920. So what that means is, when you take together this 12.5, then on top of that, we do another 2% decrease, we're talking about a combined almost 15% decrease from the pre-pandemic levels for sales tax. And we are trending, indications are showing that we are very close to that projection. On the transient occupancy side, we assumed a 17% decrease from the previous fiscal year 1819, and that was because there were the stay-at-home orders, people were not traveling, and that was in March. So for the remainder of 1819, we built in a 17% decrease. So again, similarly with the sales tax, when we budget for the next fiscal year 2021, we build on that base, that was a 17% reduction from pre-pandemic levels, to another 2.8% decrease from 1920. Now, this is a figure that consolidates two things. A decrease that we had projected was actually 3, 13%. What offsets that is that we had one hotel that was closed for renovations all of last fiscal year 1920, and was reopened toward the end of 1920, and now we expect to be open for the full year of 2021. So there's an offset there, but without that, we were at a 13% decrease. So together, taken with the 17, we were looking at potentially a 30% decrease in TOT from a pre-pandemic level. On these other revenues, we did not factor in any impacts for the previous fiscal year 1920, because business tax, a large percentage of those are gross receipts-based, and they report on the previous year. So the 1920 fiscal year, previous fiscal year was already accounted for. Now into 2021, we projected a 20% decrease based on the revenues from those businesses in the previous fiscal year 1920. On the franchise side, we-
Mark?
Yes?
Mark, you're getting, it's difficult to hear you. You're, you're beginning to fade out a little bit. If you could stay a little bit closer to your microphone, and maybe turn your microphone up, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. So on the franchise tax side, we projected a 9% decrease from the previous year 1920. And on the investment earnings side, we projected a 58% decrease from the previous fiscal year 1920. Built into that is the earnings rate environment. So because earnings are down across the board as far as securities and investment options, we are not reinvesting our securities as they mature, we're putting them into the local agency investment fund, which right now is earning about 0.62%. So because of that, because there aren't any longer-term investment options available, that's causing a big part of that decrease in investment earnings. So now I'll pause there for a little bit, as we reviewed some of our projections that were built into this current year's budget, to see if there are any questions to this point.
Are there any questions from councilmembers? I see in the purple, we've probably got a number of places where we can stop off for questions. And by the way, just looking ahead, I'll ask if there are any public comments at the end of Mr. Uribe's presentation. So in any event, any questions from councilmembers at this point?
No question, Your Honor, yeah. Mark, we had a, we implemented a program for the business tax that we gave them a little delay this year. Have you seen an uptick at all about more of them coming in recently than before, perhaps?
Yes, we have seen more businesses come forth to get their business licenses. Many of them were to take advantage of certain programs and business assistance opportunities that many of the requirements were that they have a valid city business license. So we did see some of that effect.
And then I just have a follow-up question unnecessarily on that, but are all of the hotels currently back online, back taking reservations as far as you know?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Your Honor, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from any other councilmembers at this point? Okay, Mark, please go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, so this next slide talks about the national economic forecast. And what we're seeing now through the end of this first quarter of our fiscal year, or the third quarter of 2020, the quarter ended September 30th, 2020, we're seeing this very sharp recovery. And what contributes to that is the very large federal stimulus package, $3 trillion, that came very swiftly. And also because this was a forced shutdown, people were really ready to get back out and start generating revenues and work and stores opening. So it was a very quick recovery that was V-shaped, and projections from that point forward are trending toward a little bit more modest growth in 2021 and 2022, 3.5% to 4% recovery here in these out years. And a lot of that is based on the course of the, of the virus, whether or not a vaccine is made widely available. That is trending toward a gradual uptick moving forward. Now, if you look at where we ended, the peak was in the fourth quarter of 2019, started to dip down a little bit into the first quarter of 2020. What that's attributed to is some of the effects of COVID and the news coming out of Asia at that time. But the biggest piece is the tensions between the US and China with trade relations during that time. So here's where the actual shutdown happened with the very steep decline. So we were already starting to trend a little bit lower, but this is good to see that it was a very quick bounce back. Some more numbers of note are the US unemployment peaked at 14.7% in April. Then it went down almost in half to 8.4% in August, and estimates are that it will go down to 4.7% by 2022. Now that I mentioned, these projections in the out years assume that the pandemic's impact on the economic activity is going to wane in 2021. And then, as I mentioned, closer to home, Ventura County moved to the red tier on October 6th, and there's a potential to move to the orange tier next week, the 27th. Budgeting and pandemic also came with certain surprises, things that we didn't expect. One thing, when we, with the stores closing, the outlet malls, we expected a drop-off in sales tax revenues. But there's a component now, when folks are forced to stay home and not get out to the stores, that there were some online sales transactions that increased. So we're seeing a partial offset to those anticipated reductions from the brick-and-mortar retail. Also, the building and construction activity remained strong. The Home Depot stayed open, they were deemed an essential store, they remained open. And if you went to Home Depot during those months, there were lines going all the way around the block or around the store. Business tax applications and renewals are steady. We alluded to that a little bit earlier with Mr. Kildie's question. No real drop-off on the applications and the renewals. We think that maybe if some businesses were closing, those were offset by the new businesses coming in and getting registered for their business license, so they could take advantage of any assistance opportunities. And then businesses are becoming more creative in dealing with the pandemic. I'm sure you've seen the restaurants that are offering outdoor dining and retail stores. When there are lines at some of the stores in the outlet mall, they're taking people's cell phone numbers and texting them, text messaging them to let them know when they could come back, and there's, there's capacity in their store, so they can come back and shop. Those are a few of the surprises. And pandemic relief, we got some more pandemic relief that was not anticipated. The CARES Act money for transit, $3.15 million, was known at the time we built the budget, and it was budgeted. Now, the total figure of CARES money for transit activities is $3.7 million. The $3.15 is what's anticipated for this current fiscal year. So we still have a little bit more, if things go according to plan, we still have a little bit more that rolls into next fiscal year, as far as the CARES Act funding for transit. The CDBG CARES Act money grant, phase one, $192,000, that was known, and that was adopted as part of the budget. Then we have these three highlighted areas that are the FEMA money that is allowed for reimbursement for certain purposes, PPE, public health expenses, and this safety barricade program for the restaurants that are doing outdoor dining. We also have the state CRF, or coronavirus relief funding, which we are allocated $867,000. That is largely going to be used towards personnel costs, staff that has had their time diverted to focus on COVID-related activities. And then we also recently have the county CRF funding of $469,000. And that, we're targeting for a business assistance program, the business assistance grant program primarily. And then we have become aware, and these are highlighted because those are general fund primarily related revenues that are in addition to what we had budgeted for, that is on top of what we had originally budgeted for. And once we get closer and we start to see some actual numbers, we may actually do some budget adjustments when we reach mid-year, but we will have had a lot more information by the end of December for the mid-year. And this last one, the CDBG grant, phase three, there will be a report coming forth at a future meeting with some details on that amount, but we have been allocated $384,000. So a total between what was actually budgeted, 3.3, and the new money that we've become aware of, about 1.8 million is $5.1 million in total anticipated relief. So I'll pause there for another moment, just to see if there's any question on those couple of slides on the economic news.
Any questions from any councilmembers? Okay, Mark, please proceed.
Okay, so now we get into the actual first quarter budget analysis portion of the presentation. So wanted to point out here on this slide that most revenues and expenditures are not realized uniformly throughout the year. So when we look at the end of the first quarter, we don't expect to see 25% of the annual budget realized at the end of September. Some examples of that are property tax. Property tax is received in two large distributions, one in December, one in April. So as of the end of September, we don't see anything in property tax at all. Then the second example, insurance. Insurances are paid in full once a year in July. So if we had a budget, 100% of the year would be fully expended in the first quarter, because we make the payment in the month of July. So that's just to give an example where we don't necessarily expect to see 25% of the budget. So what we do, as far as the first quarter budget analysis, we compare the actual activity for the first quarter to the actual activity for the same period in the previous year. So first quarter, current year activity compared to first quarter, previous year activity, to measure consistency. And then that measurement's typically stated in terms of actual revenue or expenditures as a percentage of the annual budget. So I'll get to some examples here, because this next slide has a lot of numbers. And I have to take, sorry, I have the picture showing, I need to see my full screen, so. There we go. So now I can point, we've got, for the general fund, focus on the general fund, these are the large revenues, sales tax, property tax, franchise fees, TOT, building permits, so on, and then some other revenue sources, come to a total of about $40 million. So in this slide, we have two previous years' worth of data, two actual years from two years ago fiscal year 2018-19. These are the actual numbers for all these revenues, coming to about $45 million. Then we have last year, actual data coming to about $43 million. And then we have the adopted budget, $40.7 million. So you can see here that we did expect a reduction in revenues, and I'll go through some of those as we already talked about, but I'll go through a little bit more as we go on. This next column, the current year budget, is the same, because we have not had any adjustments through the first three months of the year to the revenue side of the budget. So then this next column is the actual receipts as of September 30th, actual receipts for the first quarter. That comes to about $2.5 million, which is 6.1% of the total budget for the year. So this is the measurement that we tend to use as we're doing our review of the first quarter activity. So we take that 6.1% of the total budget through the end of September 30th, and we compare that to last year for the first quarter. And last year at this time, it was 5.8% of the total budget. So that kind of gives you some context of whether we are consistent with the prior year, 5.8 to 6.1. Yes, we are fairly consistent with what we saw last fiscal year. To get down into more of the specifics, when we look at the sales tax line, 8.1% realized through the first quarter. At the same time last year, that was an 8.6%. So again, we are consistent with the trends over the prior year, based on the way these revenues come in. As we mentioned, sales tax, I'm sorry, property tax, the timing, next to nothing in the first part. There's maybe some supplemental receipts there, minor, but 1%. So when we compare to last year, it was 1% as well, when we looked at the same period last year. With franchise fees, two of the major franchise fees come in, in April, in the month of April, for a one-time receipt. So that's why we see a 3% realized, when at the same time last year, we were at 4%. So again, very close, very consistent. When we go to building permits, that varies according to activity. As we mentioned with building permits, it was, the building activity remained steady during the primary months of the pandemic. With the business tax, we touched on that again, fairly consistent with prior year, and not, not a real drop-off. Then when we look at, I'm sorry, I skipped TOT, let me go back up to the TOT number, at 14.9%. When we looked at the prior year for the first quarter, we were at 18.2%. A TOT tax is received monthly, and we, at this point, as of the end of the first quarter, we are seeing that we are still on track to meet our projection. And recall that we built in basically a 30% decrease in TOT revenue for this fiscal year. So all to say that we look year-over-year at this point in time, seem to be consistent as a percentage of total budget, and at this point, we don't have any reason to adjust any of our assumptions. And when we come back for the first, for the mid-year budget review in January, we will have some more data and some more information that may see something different, that we may need to adjust our estimates. But at this point, nothing to suggest that we need to change any of our estimates on the revenue side. So because there's a lot of information here, I'm going to pause for a moment to see if there are any questions on the general fund revenue side.
Are there questions from councilmembers on the general fund revenue side, Mr. Kildie?
Yeah, Mark, on the TOT, when and if we do see an uptick, will we readjust those numbers accordingly?
Yes, if we start to see an uptick, if we see events that lead us to believe that some of our assumptions might be a little too conservative, then we would look at possibly adjusting as we move forward.
Thank you.
Other questions from councilmembers? Mark, I have one. If you go back to slide 12, and I want to go to the property tax, slide, slide four indicated that key revenue assumptions were in the sales tax and the TOT side. But I don't want to neglect property tax, since it's such a substantial component of our general fund, about 37%, I believe, and sales tax of 32%, if I recall correctly. In the table on slide 12, you, is there any chance I'm bringing that back up for us?
Yes, general fund revenues?
Uh huh, general fund revenues.
I have that up, are you not able to see that?
No, but let me, I'll tell you what, let me just ask my question. The, for, for the property tax for 2019-20, for fiscal year 1920, the prior year actual was almost 16.3 million. And in June of this year, we estimated, we adopted a budget where we estimated at 15.15 million. And the question that I have is based on, and I know we haven't received any revenues from the first installment of property taxes yet, but two questions. Number one, can you refresh our recollection on, on why we thought that the property taxes would reduce from 16.3 to 15.15 million?
Yes, that's a-
My second question after that.
Right, a very good question. We actually projected property tax to remain constant, and I'll explain why last year was so high, that we received a one-time correction in the last fiscal year of about $1 million. So that's why we ended at 16.3 million in the previous fiscal year.
Okay, and the second question then is, are, is the budget amount of 15,149,000 pluses, that's still, in staff size, a pretty good working estimate for the, for the time being, until we see what the December installment, first installment receipts are?
Yes, the assumption at the budget time for this fiscal year was that the property taxes were not as impacted by the pandemic or the economic shutdown as some of the other revenue sources are. And actually, what we're seeing is a pretty strong housing market in these last few months. So every time a house is sold, the property gets reassessed, and the values tend to go higher, which translates into higher property tax receipts.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, Mark, can you go on to the next segment, please? Thank you.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody's able to see the slides right now.
I have it full screen.
I, I, I don't see it at this point. Do other members of the council, can they see the slide?
Yes, I have a full-screen view of the, of the slide.
I see it.
I can see it as well.
Oh, I now have it, okay, thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you. So now we talked about revenues, let's move on to the general fund expenditure side of the equation. So similar setup with the data that's shown two prior year actuals, the adopted budget and the current budget. And then you have the actual expenditures as of September 30th with the percent expended. This, the expenditure slide carries over into the next slide. And I'll just go there real quick, so we can look at the bottom line. Total for the expenditures, total expenses through September 30th are $7.2 million, 17% of the total annual budget, $41.7 million. So again, the comparison is to the prior fiscal year, where we were at 16.6 of the total general fund budget expended after the first quarter last year. So that's the consistency measurement that we start off with. So let me go back to the previous slide and point out a few things. You can see that most of these are in double digits. Wanted to just point out the ones with the asterisks. City Attorney at 9.8 seems very low, the 15.1 seems a little low, 14.7, those, those seem low. What's, what's happening there are the timing of invoice payments. When we receive invoices, if we haven't received them yet, they won't be reflected in this current year actual column until they're actually paid. So there's a little bit of timing involved in some of those measurements, but the, the message is that we still expect those invoices to come in for each of the 12 months, based on what we projected. So move forward to the second half. Again, we're looking at some more of these asterisks, which are the same situation with timing of invoices. And then I'll also call attention to this economic development line, which is previous year $400,000, now $1.7 million. And that is the one-time business assistance grant program of $1 million that was built into that budget during this current fiscal year. It wasn't part of the originally adopted budget. It was approved in July of this fiscal year, so part of this first quarter, and got increased by $1 million. And then also, we had the 250,000 barricade program that was also adopted during this first quarter. So that is where you see the difference between the originally adopted budget and the current budget. And then you also see this large number here of the 67% of that line item budget, $1.7 million, $1.1 million spent year-to-date, is also due to that $1 million disbursement that was paid in July. We're talking about budgeted expenditures, wanted to do an update, I'm sorry, let me, let me just go back. Are there any questions on the expenditure slides? Again, a lot of information here. I'll pause for a second to see if there are any questions on any of the expenditure side of the general fund.
Thanks, Mark. Are there any questions from councilmembers on this slide? Mark, I do have a question. On the, the text report that you issued to us- on page six of the test of the text report, just prior to the slides 13 and 14, under general fund expenditures and transfers, it says, and I quote, "As illustrated in the table below, the majority of the general fund divisional expenditures and transfers are trending consistent with the prior year." At the very bottom of the page, it says, "All general fund division expenditures are trending consistent with the prior year percentage of budget through the first quarter of the fiscal year." And when I read that, there just seems to be a little bit of daylight between the two. Can you clear that up for me?
Yeah, I think the intent is that when we say trending consistent with prior year, it is factoring in the timing of invoices. So we are at the end of the first quarter, the end of September. There may be situations on individual line items where we maybe only have two invoices paid rather than three invoices. So that would be a timing difference. But again, we would still expect that the trending of the services that have been provided for which we will be paying for are consistent.
Well, I think what I focused on was the language when you said the majority of the of the general fund divisional expenditures and transfers are trending consistent. And that inferred to me that there was perhaps a couple that were not trending consistent. Are there any in this slide, slides 13 and 14 that you want to point out to us that are not trending consistently?
No.
Okay, all right. That answers my question. All right. Any other questions at all? Okay, keep on going. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So in talking about budgeted expenditures, wanted to give a quick update on an item from the last council meeting. We were talking about, our council approved the Licensed Childcare Stipend Program. And that is a financial support to licensed childcare centers and family childcare centers, an amount not to exceed $119,600 from the general fund. The follow-up was the transparency aspect that these childcare centers will share the facility name and owner name, and the small family childcare providers will share the owner's name. So the next fund wanted to focus on, we talked about the general fund revenues expenditures. The transit fund is one fund that receives a lot of the funding from the CARES Act money. We talked about a total of 3.7 million awarded to the city for, from CARES Act. For the fiscal year 2021, 3.3 million is approximately what will be funded by the CARES Act monies. And again, in comparing year over year, the first quarter expenses are consistent with the last fiscal year. And a more detailed discussion on transit services is scheduled for November 4. Some of the other major funds to touch on, Citywide Lighting and Landscaping Fund. That fund relies largely on property tax revenue, which we mentioned, there is a timing involved, December and April time into that with general, and also with general fund transfers. And the general fund transfers, when they're budgeted, we don't do them equally throughout the year. We wait until they're needed. So that typically happens towards the end of the fiscal year. So all of that to say that as of the first quarter, those are on track with projections. With the capital improvement projects, the timing fluctuates. The identified funding sources for C I P have not been significantly impacted by the pandemic. So the message there is that those are on track as well. And we will have an update on status of the C I P projects shortly. The other major funds, solid waste, water, sewer utilities, rely largely on charges for service, which are not significantly impacted by the pandemic. And those, again, are on track as of the data we have through the first quarter of the fiscal year. So I will do another pause there because the next set of slides we'll get into are going to be the C I P project status.
I have a question, Your Honor.
Thank you. Sorry, Mrs. Craven. Yes, please go ahead.
Um, so when you say that the solid waste, water and sewer utilities are largely on track, there was a part of the orders that came in, came down to us where that people could be forgiven for the time being for not paying their utility bills. Have we seen much of that? They would have to pay it later, was was what was told to us. But have we seen many people not paying their utility bills as a result of that order more than in the previous years?
Yes, good question. We have seen an uptick on delinquencies. But the dollar amount associated with those delinquencies, it's not been significant when we compare to all of the revenues. And as you mentioned, we do expect that that will be paid at some point as as collection when we start to follow up on on the delinquencies at a later point in the year.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing no further questions at this point. And I'll remind, if we have any members of the public watching, I'll come back later and ask for public comments at the end of Mr. Uribe's presentation. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Klotzel in the Public Works Department, and he will walk you through the C I P project status.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Are you able to hear me okay? Just wanted to check that first.
Yes, Dave, we can hear you fine.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're also taking an opportunity tonight to give a brief status update on C I P projects that have progressed into bidding, construction and closeout since adoption of the C I P in June. Essentially where we are after the first quarter, plus a little bit here into the month of October. We'll start with the projects that are currently in the closeout and warranty phase. And construction of these projects has been completed with notices of completion approved by City Council. And the next milestones that we've listed are when the project will come back to City Council one last time to exonerate the project bonds after the standard one-year warranty period is over. This closeout phase includes compiling the final contract documents, including record drawings of what was constructed and any grant funding documentation, as is the case with the Earl Joseph Drive paving project, which was partly funded with federal grant money. And I'll go through these slides, and if you have any specific questions as we go, we can address those as we go or come back to them also. So the next slide, please. These are the C I P projects currently under construction with the next milestone action listed. For the desalter, we're just over a year into construction and the project is on schedule and within budget. We just opened bids for construction of the conveyance pipeline to bring water from the wells to the treatment facility. And we'll be bringing an item to council at next week's meeting to award the pipeline contract and also give an overall update on the project costs. We'll also be coming to council in November to award the desalter operations contract. Overall, the construction is scheduled for completion in spring of next year, followed by facility startup, testing and permitting by the state with the plan for delivery of the high-quality treated water by this time next year. On the Police Department restroom project, a notice of completion will be coming to the City Council in the near future. And then the Las Bocas Estates resurfacing project, that's actually being constructed by the county. We've listed it as the C I P because of our funding contribution towards that. And this is for paving the streets up in the Las Bocas Estates area, which includes several city streets. And we have an agreement with the county to pay for the work on the city streets so that there's only one contractor up there doing all that work in that area. And this work is scheduled for completion by the county by the end of the year. The Conference Center Drain Project is is continuing on. The majority of that work was the installation of a buried concrete box drain to replace the deteriorating open concrete channel, and that has been completed. The project also includes undergrounding of the overhead power lines on the site, which is scheduled to be completed by the end of this year. Next project, the annual resurfacing S T 5017. This is the most recently completed Cape Seal and Slurry Seal project that just wrapped up the majority of the construction. There are several punch list items that need to be completed, plus some repairs that need to occur on several streets. And so that's being finalized as to the extent of the repairs needed. And that'll be occurring by the end of this year. And next step, we'll be coming back to council when all that's wrapped up for the notice of completion step. And that'll be likely early next year. The next project, the city street trees and sidewalk in the Mission Oaks area was recently awarded for construction, if you recall that, at a recent council meeting. So that'll be moving into active construction in the near future. We have the Aeration Basin Baffle Wall Project down at the treatment plant to repair, replace and improve the diffusers in the aeration basin. And that's an ongoing project with several elements currently happening down at the treatment plant. That'll, that'll go on for several months. And again, next step would be coming back to the C S D board with a notice of completion when the construction's done. And then we also have a recently awarded annual resurfacing project, the next one, S T 5020. And that's for continuation of our pavement management plan improvements on the streets for Cape Seal and Slurry Seal. And construction will begin up here throughout the winter with the asphalt repairs and concrete repairs required by the project, with the slurry seal work following in spring when when weather is, it warms up for the slurry seal. So that's the status of the construction projects. Next slide. We currently have four projects out to bid, and they're shown here with the pump station number three rehabilitation happening, along with the sewer improvements per S S N P are currently out to bid. And we anticipate coming back to C S D board for award of those construction contracts in December timeframe. Those projects are improving the equipment at the pump stations and then also sewer line repairs on the sewer improvements project. And that is a compilation of repairs that have been identified as we go through and do our routine video inspection of of all of our sewer lines. And a project is compiled then to go out and perform various repairs at different locations throughout the system. The daily drive sidewalk and gutter replacement project is out to bid again. If council recalls, we did open bids once that came in quite high. So the council action was to reject those bids and now go out to bid again. So we're out to bid, and this project again is to remove or replace sidewalk and gutter on both sides of daily drive between Las Bocas and Caillarota. Also includes a full grind and overlay of all the asphalt and those large pine trees that have caused quite a bit of the damage to the sidewalk. And then gutter will be removed. So we anticipate coming back to council very early in next year to award that contract for construction. And lastly, out to bid is some improvements at our blower equipment in Plant Three at the treatment plant. And this is replacing equipment for energy efficiency improvements for electrical cost savings. And that's those four that are out to bid. And then next slide, please. Wanted to touch, touch on since adoption of the C I P, we have added a new project, and council may recall this recently, under the C S D board action to award a design contract for this project to rehabilitate pump station number four. The the need for this was developed after the adoption of the C I P. So that was added into our C I P, and we are currently in design. And we'll be finishing up design through the rest of this year and early next year and coming back to the C S D board for approval of the project and advertising for bids. And so I just wanted to highlight, this is a case in point where the C I P is adopted and then changes made as we go through the years necessary, such as this, to add a project. And final slide is an opportunity for questions. Concludes the status update of the C I P projects, and these are the ones in the bidding, construction and closeout phases. And I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Klotzel, Mr. Kildie?
Yeah, Mr. Klotzel, the paving that was done this year, and you had also had stated that there'll be some punch list items and some repairs. Did I understand that we can expect that to be done by the end of the year?
Yes, that's our goal. We've been communicating and meeting with the contractor now to finalize their approach and their methods to make the repairs. And we want to get that done as soon as possible. And and for sure with the goal by the end of the year. But especially, we'd like to do it, again, as soon as possible while the while the weather is still somewhat favorable and we're not in the middle of winter.
So that kind of follow-up, I think you kind of answered it. You have been in contact with the contractor, and they are aware of this.
Yes, yeah, we became aware of it right away as the slurry went down. It was essentially kind of a perfect slurry storm. What happened there is the weather conditions we actually had. It was nice and warm, which is ideal slurry weather, except it was very humid. If you recall, there was some really hot and humid weather. And that, along with the 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 mix that the contractor was using, wasn't ideal for that situation. So we had a couple streets that the slurry went down a little thicker than normal. That compounded the issue with the cure time. So again, it's it's limited to a few streets. So we were aware of that from the get-go and had been working with the contractor to finalize the approach to get the the best fix possible for those streets.
Thank you.
Any other questions? For Mr. Klotzel? All right, thank you. Mr. Mr. Uribe, we'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, this is the final slide, a summary of what we've discussed tonight, is that through the first quarter of this fiscal year, there are no indicators that the 2020, 21 budget needs to be adjusted. We'll continue to monitor the economic conditions as they relate to city operations. And the mid-year budget review scheduled for January 20th is an opportunity to come back with three more months of data to see if anything has changed. So that concludes the presentation, and now we'll open it up for questions on anything we've talked about.
All right, let me see if there are any questions from council members. All right, hearing none. Let me see whether or not there are, I don't see any raised hands from any of the
I have one.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Kildie, I recognize you, though. Let me just say, if if there are any other folks who are attendees who are watching this who wish to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand on Zoom, and I can call on you in a moment after I take questions from the council members. Mr. Kildie?
Thank you. Mr. Uribe, are there anything that you can think of on the horizon that we need to be made aware of?
Nothing on the horizon that would lead us to need to change. Well, we've adjusted. Again, when we come back in January, we will hopefully have some new data and see if there's anything that, good news or bad news, either way, we'll present it at that time.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Mrs. Craven?
I don't have questions. I have comments. You want to take those after you hear from the public?
Yes, if you could hold on to them for just a moment, Mrs. Craven, thank you. Any other questions from any council members? All right, hearing none. I'll ask if there are any, at this time, any comments from the public on this item. I'm looking at the attendees list, and I do not see any raised hands. Any questions or, I'm sorry, any comments? All right, hearing none. I'm going to turn it back then to council for any comments. Who would like to be heard? Mrs. Craven, why don't you start us off, please?
First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Uribe for such a detailed explanation in the text that he sent out ahead of time. I thought it was very, very helpful, the way he explained and compared everything from the current fiscal year to to the prior fiscal year. And that was really helpful in helping me at least understand where we were and realizing we're really not in such bad shape. I've been in much worse shape in this city. So it's good to hear what you had to say, and it's good, and and I hope that that continues. I also think it's really great news from Mr. Klotzel that the timing of the desalter work has, I think, moved up a little bit. It was scheduled, I think, for December instead of fall to be really up and running, not just on a test basis. And so that's a couple of months, it's a year away. But anytime a project moves forward and doesn't slide backwards, I'm really happy. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Craven. Other council members? Any comments? All right, I'm hearing none. Two comments from me. One, again, thank you to Mark and to Dave for the presentations. I thought they were very well done, very comprehensive, and thank you. Secondly, to echo what Mrs. Craven said, anytime you hear that your major capital improvement project, in this case, the desalter, is on schedule and on budget, that's music. Uh, that's music to our ears, so. Uh, and this is a, uh, I especially appreciate staff's effort because this is a report that we, as the council, asked for uh coming out of the, you know, all of the, the, all of the uh extraordinary amount of work um that Mr. Uribe and Ms. Nichols and city staff did for our budget for the for this year, and we asked for these quarterly reviews. So I think they're they're really important, and this is, this is well presented. All right. Um. With that, no other comments from council members? Then that concludes um this item on the agenda, and there are no additional items.
Your Honor, your honor, can I make, I'm sorry, can I make this run really quick comment here, if you wouldn't mind?
Go ahead, Mr. Kildie.
Um, again, yeah, I I agree. I want to thank the the staff uh for this, but I think a real key for this is is the county in general about the color codes of what we're able to be doing, and hopefully the trends will stay what they are now. And I know we've said, all council members have said things at all the end of pretty much the meetings here. But the real key is for how people, you know, follow the protocols as best they can, and hopefully we'll keep, you know, this positive trend. So those are my comments, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kildie. Uh, any other, okay, no, hearing no other comments. Um, Mrs. Craven, would you like to adjourn the sanitary district meeting, and then I'll go ahead and adjourn the council meeting? Mrs. Craven, you're, you need to be on, there you go.
At that. I will now adjourn the Camrio Sanitary District Board meeting.
All right, and with thanks to staff for an excellent presentation, um, I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting of the city council. Thank you.